I just stopped the chatter, but I'm gonna call a meeting to order. Our last meeting of the month. Appreciate those we have a pet dog, you say, look familiar? We'll hear about that in a second. Hopefully, we have some folks watching us on Electric City Television. I will lead us in invocation tonight in respects and flowers be led by Councilman Matt Kyle Newton. Please rise. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon our community. We ask that you have your hand on our council as we deliberate as policymakers in regards to the health and wealth of our city. As always, we ask that you protect members of our teams that put themselves in harm's way and keep your hand on our entire organization as they do the important work for the city. We ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get into the body of our meeting, we have a special recognition of some of the folks on our team, and I'm gonna ask our Assistant City Manager David McKeown to lead this part of the agenda. David?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna ask Chief Bratcher to come up here and Public Works Director Ken Mullenax. We just wanna take a few minutes, take a moment to reflect on and allow the, not only you as our city council, but also the public to understand the preparation and some of the different responses that have gone into some of the storms we've experienced lately. We really, as soon as a storm is forecasted for our area, we begin planning for it. And it's been very active over the last three years, and we've been able to develop a, really, a good operational plan for that. We've had two storms this year, of course, Hurricane Florence and Hurricane Michael that have impacted our area. They weren't, we kinda missed the worst of them, but the current, about, with Hurricane Florence, really, it was a slow-moving storm moving from the west that was projected to hit us anywhere from Georgetown County all the way up to the North Carolina border. Of course, it ended up hitting North Carolina. But the initial projections actually showed it moved westward inland and coming over our area as a Category 1 hurricane and tropical force winds. Of course, you know palm trees can handle that amount of wind, but certainly oak trees and pine trees cannot, as we experienced in Irma in 2017 where we had a lot of down power lines, a lot of downed trees, and we had a significant response during that operation. And going back even over to 2016, we had Hurricane Matthew. And Hurricane Matthew, it was a Category 1 storm that came up the Florida east side and kinda curved and scraped South Carolina's, a Category 1 hurricane, caused a lot of major damage in South Carolina. And we actually deployed a lot of different assets to the coast during those storms. We actually sent our instant management team that we host, it's a sled and Department of Homeland Security team, and Chief Bratcher's gonna talk a little bit about that tonight and their deployment operations. So they were actually deployed to Charleston to manage evacuations for Hurricane Matthew, to Jasper County, and then to Marion County when it flooded. And then we sent a whole crew of the Department of Public Works to Mount Pleasant in the Charleston County area to help with storms out there, and we see that it has a potential impact for our area, do we start planning? And we start planning and really looking at our operations, our contingency of operations, our staffing, and planning for our response, and then ultimately we're planning for our recovery and doing this all before it happens. And then a fourth thing that we planned for is mutual aid, because we know people aren't on the assistance. That may be us, and we may be calling on somebody for assistance, or that may be other assets that we need to deploy elsewhere to a disaster area, which we've done these past three years. So with that, I wanted to just take a moment and allow Chief Bratcher to share some of the deployments that we've had just recently with these storms and some of the preparation. Chief Bratcher?
Good evening. In preparation for some of the storms that we've gone through, and as David mentioned, even back in Matthew, we started out with doing a major evacuation in Charleston. We left and went to Jasper County, left Jasper County, went to Marion County. We pretty much covered the coast of South Carolina from Georgia to North Carolina in a few weeks. And as we stayed there, our goal was to go into the emergency operations center in those counties and help them get back to a working, something that they could manage on their own, because you know those counties, they don't have the resources we have, and their staff is very limited. So we went in and helped them get back to something that they could manage on their own, and then we left and come back. And then in all of that, the Fire at Table Rock, if you remember that, we left Marion County and sent people to the Fire at Table Rock and worked with the State Foresters team, and then ended up with a team from, out of Utah that we'd never saw before and probably never see again. So we ended up after about Thanksgiving, you know, being all said and done with that. And then, of course, this past storm, we ended up in Billen County, and the operations center that we was working out of, we was actually there when the hurricane made landfall, and we literally got washed out of the fire department we was working out of and had to move to the sheriff's office. So in preparation for all of this, as David mentioned, we start watching these storms maybe two weeks out. We have conference calls through State E&amp;D, and we plan our path of deployment. And in doing all of that, we've got also our technical rescue team that, Type 2 Swiftwater team, that we have to prepare for. And then all of this going on, we've gotta pay attention to what's gonna happen here at home so that we have resources to handle any local emergencies that we have. And we've managed to do that. We've got, our technical rescue team is, of course, you know, one of the, probably the best in the state. We have the members and staff that we can do that, and we're also able to deploy our instant management team and leaving enough here to manage and also staff an additional engine companies and additional ladder company throughout the storm.
From, good evening. From a public works standpoint, our role in this is debris management primarily, and that's anywhere from clearing the roads and the roadways that our fire emergency personnel can get through to assist our citizens, to hauling it off when it's all said and done. It could be an event, a storm, a thunderstorm blows up one evening to a hurricane, just like these gentlemen have spoken of. Our role is to be prepared to get this debris out of the way so that we can have our streets opened up and we can get our, sort of, like Duke Energy and folks like that can get to their power lines and clear those lines. For us, we don't wanna just send our folks out there to, in harm's way, because a lot of times, and I've been out personally since I've been Public Works Director and seen what these guys do, you're out there on a dark street and you don't know if the next road you're gonna turn on, if you're gonna have a downed power line, or if you're gonna have downed trees in the roadway. A lot of ours gets reported by our police and fire departments to us, it goes through our dispatch, things like that. But our role is to clear that debris, and we wanna do that systematically. We want our employees that are out there, that they're trained ahead of time, just some of the things that we train on, we do, we have downed power line safety for our employees, we do our chainsaw safety, aerial lifts for our folks that are gonna be in the bucket trucks and things like that, wanna make sure that they've got their proper PPE, their personal protective equipment on when they're out there, because the last thing we wanna do is send them out there. They're gung ho to go out and clean those streets and get those roads opened up, but you gotta do it in a safe way. So our goal was to make sure that we have our, we train our employees to do that. From that, we've got all of our public works staff that we schedule ahead of time to where they know, usually if it's a planned event, that's a 24-hour schedule, and we're scheduling those two shifts of 12-hour periods. And those folks, they're made up of four-man teams or four-person teams where you've got a team leader, that person's usually a bucket truck operator, or front-end loader operator, chainsaw operator, and a helper. So we've got our teams together ahead of time, and so those folks, they know when they go out there to respond to that, that they're prepared to do so. This last event and the last two hurricanes that we've had, we've been very fortunate that we have missed the brunt of the storm, but at the same time, we had to be prepared for what was, for the worst. So what we did was we had these teams out ahead of time, they knew they could be getting a call at any moment, and in that respect, they would respond to whatever we need them to do. But we didn't waste resources. We knew ahead of time, just be on call, this is gonna be your team, this is who you're gonna be working with, this is the training that you need. And once they, once they knew that, we come in, our staff come in, and we manned the emergency operations center to where we could monitor the calls coming straight in to dispatch, and we could get on the radio and have our folks go out immediately to respond to that. So very proud of that. We've added some additional personnel, not just Public Works, but with our Parks and Recreation folks as well. They'll go out a lot of times and sit on our, put out cones and barricades for these folks, and obviously, they receive their training that they need ahead of time as well, the safety is first. And they'll go out, and that'll free up our police and fire departments to go out and do the things that they need to do, but we can sit there on those trees if it's got a downed power line in it or something like that, they're ready for that. So that's kinda the role of the Public Works Division.
And really, just as Ken and Chief Bratcher said, we plan for the worst. So, you know, the minute storm comes in, we're planning for the worst, that we may have Category 1, Category 2 over the top of us. So with that, you know, we really transitioned from some of the day-to-day activities that we do to emergency activities, and just as Ken said, a lot of the recreation crew members became first responders. And they became first responders during the event, that we could call upon them along with Public Works and our other task force teams to get out to the community to have the most seamless response and quick response we can. So we wanted to thank you for your support for that and let you know and let the public know that our team is here and ready to respond, and we're well-prepared, and we've had a little experience over the past three years, and it's become a seamless process for the response. So thank you again for your support. We appreciate it.
And some of them leave tonight.
Yeah, please, all the first responders and those participating in the events, please stand. I know we have a lot of them here, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, guys, for doing what you do to protect our city and also our state. The minutes of our October 8th meeting were distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve? First by Dr. Thompson, and then pro 10, second by Mr. Kyle Newton. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, the minutes of October 8th passed unanimously. We have two items of old business, and the first item is request consideration, request the second reading of ordinance 18-15 to annex and zone to our five single-family residential 3.56 acres located at 1912 East Calhoun Street. Ms. McCollum?
This is, as you said, 3.56 acres on East Calhoun Street that is proposed to have 14 single-family homes built upon it. I think a couple of important things about this. Number one is it's sandwiched in between two existing developments, single-family residential developments, Cobblestone East and Cobblestone West, and it also, right now, in the county has an RM zoning designation. So our designation as R5 would actually be considered a downgrade in the zoning because it's not multifamily in nature. The proposed lot sizes will be about, average about 6,800 square feet is based upon their conceptual plan, and just as a part of the process, the annexation is certainly the first step, but then the land and the development would be subject to our subdivision guidelines and the plaid approval process. So we have received no additional calls or comments or concerns from the public. The Planning Commission recommended its approval, and of course, you've had first reading, and the staff would recommend this on second reading tonight.
Thank you. I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Chapman?
This is the area that I serve, and I certainly think it's a good addition to our city, as well as I've not received any pros or cons calls on the development. So with that, I make a motion, we accept it as proposed.
First by Mr. Chapman, and second by Mr. Stewart. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously on the second and final read. Our next item-
...inquent debts that are owed to the city, and the way we do this is by making a claim against the person's state tax refund. And passing this ordinance will allow us to continue to use that program through the municipal association and their cooperation with us, and Margot's gonna tell you a little bit more.
Yes, and thank you for, Terry Martin covering for me at the last council meeting when we had first reading on 10-8. But we are requesting approval of ordinance 18-16 relating to the recovery of collection costs through the Set Off Debt Collection Act. And what I wanted to do as a follow-up to the last meeting was the question about the amount of debt that was submitted. The amount of debt of the 643 is accumulation of several years' worth of bad debt expense for utilities. We average about $101,000 a year of bad debt, which really is about 0.52% of our total utility revenues. So while the number is shocking of 643, it really is accumulation of totals. This year's bad debt for fiscal year 18 was $107,000 for the total revenues, and it was 0.52% of our total revenues for the year. So I just wanted to declare, I think that was a question that had come up at the last meeting, and I wanted to follow up with that. But we have participated in this program since 2003, and we are just reaffirming our relationship with the Department of Revenue and the Municipal Association.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I think that was the biggest question.
Okay.
It seemed like a big number, but that makes sense. Is that a rolling number?
It's a roll, it goes from 2012, it goes back that far. Sometimes they don't have a refund in one year, so that debt can carry over to the next year for our customers, and we don't wanna write it off as a potential to collect it from their tax return.
Good. Thanks.
Or tax refund, rather.
Ms. Hogan?
Is 0.52, is that a normal number, or is that low? It seems low.
It does seem low, because we have the ability to disconnect for non-payment, that some businesses don't have, for collection means, they don't have that ability. So we do have that ability. And so this is just our inactive accounts. Our active accounts, we can disconnect to collect. So you can see anywhere in a normal business, that's not utility-based, 5% is a bad debt number.
With that, I'd like my motion to approve this on second.
Second? First by Mr. Hogan, and second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously on the second and final read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finished with old business, we'll jump right into new business. We have eight items, and the first item is request consideration of accommodation tax, better known as ATAX, Advisory Committee recommendations. Ms. McCollum?
This is a good topic for us, because these are dollars that are collected from your hotel lodging industry. It represents the 2% lodging tax that is collected by those places of business and turned into the state, and then they remit the dollars back to us. The way the formula works, we're fortunate in that we get to reallocate those dollars to various nonprofits for activities that are tourism-based and help generate more dollars for our community through marketing and the promotions of tourism. Our Economic Development Director Kimberly Spears is here to share more details about these recommendations.
This year, the city received 33 applications for projects requesting ATAX funds. The city's total allocation for this year was $185,473. The total amount requested by these organizations was $197,333. There's a spreadsheet that is in your packet, I believe, that has the ATAX committee's recommendations, also the summary that lets you know what those applicants ask for basically, or the projects that they ask for. In making these recommendations, the committee gave consideration to the applicant's tourism track record, their data collection methods, economic benefit and funding sources, and ability to attract and sustain tourism. So based on that criteria, and especially the ability to generate tourism, ATAX committee recommended the distribution of $168,333 to 29 projects and/or applicants, and then the remaining dollars, $17,139, we'd like to carry over in anticipation of some upcoming opportunities that we will have this year, and that is allowed. We had, for this year, we had enough money to fund all the projects and requests that met those criteria, and I'd like to say that the staff concurred with the recommendations, and thanks to the committee for their time and genuine interest. I also'd like to recognize those committee members, Rebecca Purifoy, Cindy Suddles, John Doolittle, Shelton Pace, Vicki Color, Summer Fredette, and Reggie Hawthorne. They were a very active and interested committee.
Good. Thank you. Always. We have comments?
Did you say we was able to fund all the projects?
We were able to fund all the projects that met the criteria. It's pretty specific in terms of those grants. Unfortunately, they don't pay the light bill, they pay specifically for tourism-impacted grants.
Mr. Jeff Robertson, and then Ms. Chapman?
I was going through the spreadsheet, and some were offered the exact amount they requested, some less, and then there were three that got more than what-
Yeah, the CBB actually got a little bit more, I think, because of some allocations that we were able to meet in terms of, the committee didn't really want to fund some of the conferences, but they also, but they wanted to fund more marketing and more advertising. So there were several requests that kind of were outlined, and they were able to decide what they felt like was most important and most impactful.
I guess leading into my next question was, why wouldn't that additional amount given not have been given to someone who was denied a request?
Well, because it's very specific, the law is very specific about what those funds can be used for, and if the agency that's asking for those funds doesn't represent or meet that criteria, it really is against what you can do.
So they didn't meet the criteria?
They just didn't meet the criteria, or their project didn't meet the criteria. And like I said, a lot of these agencies have a track record of how they utilize that money, and all of that is taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Ms. Chapman?
That was similar to my same question, but I do appreciate all the committee's work, and they've been doing this for years, but with that is, the remaining amounts that aren't used, that rolls over and we distribute it next year.
Yes.
So I would just, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, you have that option, or we may have something that, you know, that would come before you again for your approval.
Okay.
That would be-
All right. I was just, especially those two from the CBB, they were a third more than what they asked for, and it seemed a bit odd that some didn't get everything they were asking for, but, but again-
It really was, it really, the committee really did, was very diligent in their recommendations. I have to applaud them.
I do too. I just, from our side, it looks a little, we don't, we're not in the committee, so we don't get to see that or hear the discussion, so, thank you.
What about Ms. Stewart?
Just kinda following up on both Councilman Roberts and Chapman's question, like if, and I assume that the organizations who request money, they have a budget, and they say, hey, if we can get X amount of dollars, then we meet our budget for the year, whatever the case may be. But in the example of those who've got a third more than what they requested, well, now they've got a lot more money going toward their budget, so why wouldn't, you know, I guess as a practice, if you requested 10, whether you get 10, but if there's anything left, put that back in the pot and roll over for the next year, to go toward another project next year?
I think the consideration there was that the organization that they decided to give more to was able to really utilize that money so that we'd really, it would truly benefit. In other words, we were able to take the, for the CBB, for instance, the marketing and advertising for all of the city, that's pretty reasonable in that regard for what they're proposing. And they had asked for more money on those conferences, but the committee did not feel like those conferences. So they did ask for it, and they were not funded on the specific grant request there, but they were, they decided that they wanted to add some money to their other aspect of their request.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
See, the city benefited from this by a number of $25,000.
I'm sorry.
The city?
The city-
Yes.
Received $25,000 for this, and that's part of what the union says to all-
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
I think they did a good job, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of ATAX committee.
Thank you.
First by Dr. Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lockridge. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Passes unanimously. And again, as Kimberly said, we appreciate the service of the committee. I hope we can have lunch, maybe?
Breakfast, yes.
Good, thank you. Our next item is request consideration of capital equipment purchases for the Public Works Division. Ms. McCollum?
We're gonna ask Ken Mullenax to come back up to the podium. As you know, having our properly functioning equipment in Public Works is very important to us, and we have a request tonight for a replacement purchase for a tractor that's used by our trash crews. Ken?
Yeah, we've got a 2006 case tractor that needs a transmission. The tractor has 14,734 hours on it. The cost to repair that transmission is $13,100. With that, with those hours that it has on it, in the event that if it needed a motor in it or an engine in it, it would be in upwards of $16,000, $17,000. We just felt like that it was not good, wouldn't make good sense to repair that tractor and spend that money on that, given that it's got that many hours on it. So we would recommend, this would be, this is used daily by our sanitation department to pick up the debris from the roadway, and we do have, currently have four tractors that we use on, for our four routes, and then we have three spares. This takes us down to two spares. There's a lot of times when these spares, they've got a lot, the other two have a good many hours on them, and we do, we are warranty, so staff recommends that rather than spend the money on the transmission and risk having to put an engine in it, that we purchase a new tractor.
Appreciate it. Comments? Ms. McCollum?
It is from the state contract vendor, Old Stone Tractor, and they are located in Anderson. The funding would come from our capital equipment fund, and the purchase price is $62,850.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Ms. Chapman?
The only other question is, typically, this would go back to be sold as is, to under the state contract?
Yes, sir. I think we also have another 2006 tractor, so we may look at parts there as well, depending on what we typically get off gov deals for, to sell that. So that would be parts we could use for our, for our other spare tractor.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
One question. Is that new hauling equipment?
That is a- That is a, that is New Holland.
Have you been satisfied with the performance of New Holland?
Yeah, Brian, to that, so Brian, Purdue, our sanitation manager. Yes, so far, the New Holland's been operating pretty well out there. We've only had one major issue with one of the tractors with an engine valve sticking in it and it caused a problem, but the New Holland company warranted it and replaced that for us. But as far as the operating unit does an exceptional job out there for us.
One comment I would make about that is that engine was out of warranty, and Old Stone went to back for us with New Holland, and they had their representatives come down, and they agreed to replace that engine for us at no cost. And it was out of warranty.
Well, I certainly support our local vendors.
Absolutely.
And I know the importance of good, reliable equipment coming from a construction background. So, with that, I'd like to recommend that we accept this bid proposal.
First by Mr. Jeff Roberts.
Second.
Second by, I lost it, Mr. Chapman. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sir?
Aye.
opposed? Pass this to Nancy. Thanks, Ken, Brian. Moving right along, we have request consideration to purchase an intercom system for the detention center. Ms. McCollum?
We're going to call on Chief Stewart and Captain Carpenter to help us out with this particular intercom system for the detention center. And we also have a representative from Georgia Detention with us this evening. But they will tell you that Georgia Detention, we are under contract with Georgia Detention now for services in our detention center, and I'd like for them to describe a little bit about what we currently have with Georgia Detention and why we are recommending this new system in the, in our jail.
Thank you, Ms. McCollum. Again, this is a intercom system that is 12 years old currently, and we just flip the lever back and forth. This would, it's a big box that sits in our control room, aided system, which in the future, we could also add airlocks for the cells that are over there and control that by computer. As Ms. McCollum said, we are under contract right now. Georgia Detention is our maintenance provider for all the cell doors, the airlocks. And you'll remember, most recently, they installed a video system in the federal jail for us last year, and we've been very satisfied with their service. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, sir. Any comments? Ms. Stewart?
Just curious, how would this, you know, I know we have city jail and our federal jail. What do we have on our federal side, and do these two interact with one another?
The federal side, we have, the intercom system is based into our locking mechanism, so it's a one complete system. The locks that we have in the city jail are a little bit older, as far as push-button clicks that open and close the doors. So, that is what I'm kind of talking about in the future. We could upgrade that, but the locking system right now is working very well. The intercom system is failing, and basically, it's costing us more to upkeep that than it would just to replace it at this time.
The, the computer system that you're going to be using for this new system, is there like a backup in case you have something quirky going on with the computer? How does all that work? Is there, you know, how would you still be able to interface with the prisoners if that computer system?
If the intercom system went down? We do have emergency generators downstairs for the city jail that operates on a natural gas system, so we never have to worry about replenishing that and fueling it back up. The generator system would kick on and provide that. Fail-safe is manual keys to go around door to door.
The old-fashioned way, huh?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
I have one. You said that you would be transitioning into the airlock system. What type of system do we have at present?
Well, currently, in the city jail, if you remember, maybe about 10 years ago, around 2006, 2007, we did update our maximum security side. The female pods are still manual, and then you have the work side, which is really just a set of bunk beds that are in a large work area.
Okay.
Anything else?
So, this would be a bid from Georgia Detention in the amount of $34,074.55, and that would come from the detention center's budget.
I move that we adopt the request to purchase the intercom system, Police Department Detention Center.
First by Mr. Lockridge, and second by Dr. Thompson. Still the question, where's Georgia Detention located? Georgia?
Probably. You're right, Mayor, you're right.
All right. All those in favor, just, no, go ahead.
One other question. I know the bid's $34,000. I know we currently have a contract, I guess we're under contract with the Georgia Detention Center, I guess. Is that the reason why we just sole sourced it back to them, just to keep it the same better?
Yes, sir. There would not be an existing service contact, contract charge for this. It would just merge into what we already have.
And one thing I didn't see on here, what about the warranty? You know, what type of warranty or interaction, it'll be the same service contract we have with it now, or what are we guaranteed for?
That would be something I'd have to check on for you, Mr. Stewart, but we've never had an issue, I will tell you, with Georgia Detention standing behind any of their products or any services they've ever provided. I think it would probably be the standard warranty, and I just don't have that information. But I would not feel uncomfortable with this company, because they've been with us for years.
Thank you. All those in favor, sir?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this to Nancy. Thank you, Chief, Captain. Our next item is to request consideration to purchase a vehicle for the law enforcement victims advocate grant. Ms. McCollum?
Just a word about items four, five, and six. All total, we are looking tonight on the agenda at 14 total vehicles for the police department. Two of them will be from grants, and we'll describe the funding sources for the others. But I think these are good opportunities for our police department, and we're not going to let the chief sit down. We'll let him describe. The first one, which is the law enforcement victim advocate grant, which is 100% money for us. And Chief, would you tell us about that vehicle?
Yes, ma'am. This is a new grant for us that we've never had before. It's for a law enforcement victim advocate, and this is actually for the vehicle that's included as part of that grant. The grant you'll see is for $124,095. The city's portion to that is 20% that comes out of crime victims' money, out of the fines from our municipal court, and the victim advocates' fund is funding that 20% to meet this grant. So, with the total cost of this, with the grant that we're awarded from the Attorney General, and what they recommend is the Dodge Caravan minivan on state contract. They specifically want a minivan for the purpose of being able to move a family in the middle of the night, in case it was a domestic violence situation or something to that effect. This is on state contract, and they will purchase that vehicle 100%.
Thanks, sir. Makes sense. Any comments? Question, Ms. Stewart?
I remember about, maybe four years ago, maybe a little bit longer than, we purchased a vehicle for the victims' advocate grant as well. I think it was maybe a Tahoe or something to transport the families with. What, is this an additional vehicle for that program? Or are we getting rid of the vehicle that we're currently using now? But my recollection, we had purchased one, something like a few years ago.
Yes, that was for Ms. Barbara Groves, and she's still in that position. This will virtually give us two victim advocates. The only thing new about this position is it will be a law enforcement victim advocate. They also have Class I certified powers with power of arrest. This will go much further for us. The law enforcement victim advocate we've already chosen is Corporal Melissa Boggs, and she will be able to assist victims of crime, but also investigate assault and battery, third defense kind of cases. Within this first week, she's already made 10 arrests by signing warrants for assault and battery third. So, this is benefiting the city and us and the police department together. It'll just basically give us two victim advocates.
I appreciate it. Thank you. That's a good, good thing.
And this is from Santee Automotive in Manning, under state contract, total cost of $22,211.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
Make a motion that we accept the bid for, from Santee Automotive, for the Dodge minivan, an amount of $22,211.
Second. First by Ms. Stewart, second by Mr. Kyle Newton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sir?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this to Nancy. Our next item is request consideration of capital purchases for the police department. Ms. McCollum?
This is the, this is the bulk of your 14 vehicle purchases this evening, and we've broken those down into several categories, which includes the vehicles themselves and all of the equipment to outfit those vehicles. And it also tells you that they were under state contract and where the dollars are coming from. The good part is that we have, not all of these funds are having to come from your capital equipment fund. We have some other sources of revenue as well. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. And if it's appropriate, I'll just go down by sections. Section A, you'll see, this is the Dodge Charger V6. So, this is the same vehicle that we purchased for the last several years now. Still very satisfied with that vehicle. They have held up, maintained very well, and also are a lot more fuel-efficient than the other vehicles, such as the Ford Interceptor sedan or the Ford Interceptor SUV. They are on state contract. It is in Clinton, North Carolina, but that is a South Carolina state contract. As you see, the funding sources are different, so in section A, you see that we're requesting seven of those Chargers. That's because the seven there will come from the DEA East share money. Section B is 2019 Dodge Charger is separate. That Charger would come from the capital equipment funding. You see, we did reach out to several providers for the installation of emergency equipment. Last year, we chose Tri-County. They were very efficient, not only in their cost, but they had our vehicles, non-vehicles completed within two weeks. All we had to do at the city was place the decal on them, they were put back out on the road. We're very, also, happy with the watch guard camera system. That is the same system that the South Carolina Highway Patrol puts out for all their vehicles. It's on state contract also, and very happy with it. Whenever we've had an issue with them, they have gladly sent us a box to send it back and send us a complimentary unit to go ahead and install it while we send it back. The, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. I don't feel like I'm going too fast. Section C is two state contracted 2019 Chevrolet Silverado trucks. We're asking for the two trucks this year because you can see, as the price, it's very comparable to the Dodge Charger. It is a four-door Chevy Silverado, but looks like an extended cab, has the smaller doors on the back. Those would fit in very well for our detective division to get some other type of vehicle other than a Charger or something to that nature is the reason we chose those. You would see the, we chose West Chatham for that, for the installation of emergency equipment. That was the same emergency outfit that we used last year for our narcotics vehicle, and we're very satisfied with their service.
We have a question on this section?
No.
Okay, go right ahead, Stewart.
Okay, next section would be the actual, we also have one current K-9 vehicle that is a Ford Interceptor. It's held up very well, and feel like it is more durable than the Chevy Tahoe. We have had three recent Chevy Tows in the fleet where we had to replace the engine, the transmission, the drivetrain, and several very costly issues, so try to stay away from that vehicle at this time. And lastly, you'll see, the van is on state contract. That is primarily used for transport for the federal prisoners. We're transporting daily to Greenville and Spartanburg, South Carolina, for the federal port houses. We have had problems with one of the 2005 Chevy vans that we use for transporting. They are, again, aging, 12 years old, and we will continue that partnership with the U.S. Marshals and Bureau of Prisons. So, this time, just recommend that we replace one of those vans. You see at the bottom, the funding is separated from the two different sources. Capital equipment funding to replace four vehicles, and the actual DEA East share money replaced seven of the vehicles.
Chief, what's the form around the East share money? Is it, how do they divvy up that money? Is it based on?
It's based on seizures.
Okay.
It's based on working together as a group. If the case is in Anderson, we get a larger share of that, but we do partner Anderson, O'Conne, Pickens, Greenville, Spartanburg, and Cherokee. So, if we have our DEA task force officer on that, then we're pulling a share of that. We've been very fortunate due to a case that they've made to have had a very large seizure yearly.
Good to, thanks. Anything? Ms. Lock?
Going back to C, I think it's the trucks. Is there going to be a bed cover or something for that?
Yes, sir. We would either do the bed cover or just a standard toolbox that we could lock.
Okay.
Anything of value would be secured.
Ms. Stewart?
I have several questions. First, under section A, we've got seven Dodge Chargers at $161,000, and, which is roughly a price of about $27,000 each. And then outfitting, add that, it'd be 206, but unless I'm missing something, the 161, and then you add $30,498, that comes up to 191. What's the difference between the 191 and the 206? Because if you outfit those seven, it comes up to 191, not 206.
Oh, I'm just jumping in here because I helped the chief total out these numbers. If you take the 161 and you add the $30,000 for whatever he's outfitting, the lights, sirens?
$30,498.
And then underneath it, you have watch guard, additional camera costs of $14,560.
Oh, so those, okay, those three?
Those three numbers equal your 206.
Okay, I apologize.
All of those costs are under A, right?
Right.
Under A, yes.
Okay. The second question is, the Dodge Charger under item B, roughly, I guess that car is costing us, what, $20,000 versus the, what's the difference between that one and the one up in A? Because if you add the packaging of roughly about $4,000 to that one, that means that puts that Charger around $20,000?
Yes, sir. That is just a slightly different Charger. That is what we call the detective package or street-level appearance. It'll come with console, carpeting, and that vehicle would be slated for the Assistant Chief.
Okay. The next question under item C, just curious, in our detective division, you mentioned that we needed trucks for our detective division. How for detective divisions, kind of help me understand why we need a truck for a detective division?
The trucks have been very durable. This is not the first time it will be, and the detectives, we've had them in narcotics for quite some time. They do seem to work and blend in better than using a Charger or an Interceptor or something like that. They get about the same gas mileage, and also for the fact that we do buy vehicles from time to time that we can use in inclement weather. That is a fact, too. We're getting mostly Chargers this year, but also vehicles we could use in case of snow or some type of weather like that.
Okay. Two more questions, and I'll shut up. Under item D, the Interceptor, the SUV, I see the packaging on that one's roughly $10,000 for it to outfit a SUV versus a regular Charger. What's the difference in the pri- What's the difference in the price of the package? Because it isn't light, siren, cages, console, one of those, same type of things for that SUV?
Yes, sir. The reason that one is incredibly more is because it's going to come with a stainless steel cage for the K-9 in the back, and it'll also come with some equipment, such as what they call like a hot dog alarm that will alert the handler if the car overheats with the dog in it. And also, it'll have a push button release for the dog so it can deploy. The lights are in line with what purchases we're already making, it's just that vehicle will come fully equipped without our shop having to install anything.
Then the last question on the item E, the Ford Transit van, I noticed it says the Public Works Department will install the previous cage and emergency equipment at a cost of $1,000. Is that typical for one department to charge back? Have we put in a bid price for them? Because I thought, all being one city, you know, we just.
Right. The cost of the $1,000 is for the blue light, siren, whatever lights we have to put on the van itself.
I thought they're replacing that from the previous van, it says the department will install the previous cage, transport and emergency equipment estimated at $1,000.
Right. We will install the previous cage and put that back in the van.
But not the emergency equipment?
It is very aged. The lines are brittle, with twelve years being on the road, back and forth on the interstate. I would recommend replacing those lights and also the sirens.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
How many K-9 cars do we have? You said we have one, but how many K-9s do we have currently?
We currently have one K-9. We are in preliminary stages right now of investigating that and replacing, adding an additional K-9 handler. We do have a Ford Interceptor vehicle, and we also have a spare, we have two spares actually, but one is failed, so we're using that vehicle for parts to keep the spare K-9 vehicle running. So, they're both pretty much in bad shape, nearing the end of their lives, so that's the reason we're asking for a new K-9 vehicle.
Is the new SUV, the Interceptor, is it four by four?
No, sir. It's just standard state contract.
And you answered one of my questions, because I know that earlier this year, I think, there was a K-9 that got overheated, it passed away because the truck or the SUV quit running until the AC went out, and then, so this is equipped with all that to make sure that that doesn't happen to us?
Yes, sir. The handler, one of our officers will have that device, and we'll alert him if the car was overheating.
Okay. And last one, it's more of a comment. I personally have Ford Transit vans, and they get phenomenal use out of them, but they're great on gas mileage. I think you'll get a lot of wearability out of them for long term, so.
Yes, sir. We purchased one two years ago and been very satisfied with it.
Great gas mileage. With that, I'd make a motion, we accept all ABC and A, B, C, D, and E as presented. Okay.
First one, Mr. Chapman. Second by Mr. Loughridge. Any further discussion?
Good job.
Absolutely.
You almost have to be a mechanic, a car enthusiast, and know all this stuff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this in Anderson. Thank you. Our next item, item B six, is, the police department is up again.
Yes.
Request consideration of purchase of vehicle for Transit Safety Enforcement Grant. Ms. McConnell?
And you can tell, we separated the two grant vehicles out for the purposes of being able to report this to the agencies that are, that we're receiving the grants from. So, chief?
Yes, ma'am. This is the same grant you should be familiar with. We've had it before. We had a two officer grant from the Department of Public Safety for Highway Traffic Safety Enforcement. This would be the same grants from within the state, so we're very fortunate to get that one. This is a 100% grant, paying for the salary, equipment, vehicle, and all. Again, it's a state contract vehicle. Reason you're seeing a 2019 Ford Interceptor is because of the Buy America grant rather than the Charger, which we usually purchase here at PD. So, we had a choice of either the Ford Interceptor or Chevy Tahoe, and by far, the Ford Interceptor sedan would be more appropriate here in the city for traffic enforcement. The price, you'll see, $24,487 is including the sales tax is the reason for the difference in that. But we have two of the Ford Interceptors in our fleet right now, and they both held up very well.
Thanks, sir. Questions? Comments? Mr. Chapman?
Is this position going to be filled by an existing officer, or is this going to be a new position that we're going to find a new?
We have filled out with Sergeant Jamie Brock. He's in our traffic division, and he was very eager to get back on this grant that he was on once before, and so we've already filled it, and we will look at backfilling that out very soon.
Okay, excellent. Thanks.
Mr. Holborn, then Mr. Stewart?
Quick question, chief, and I probably should know this answer. Do we have a grant writer within the police department? I remember years ago, we had Kelly Kelly, I think that was her name.
That's right.
That wrote grants for the police department. Do we have someone specifically that does that now?
We do. Ms. Sarah Young replaced Kelly Kelly, and she works very closely with Captain Robert Rivas to make sure we have a fax script.
I mean, I think it's very, anytime we can get, obviously, his grants, that some of them are a match, or sometimes a partnership, that we have to do, but I like to see grants.
As always.
That's right.
Mr. Stewart?
And I may have, you may have mentioned it, I didn't hear it. This is a one-year grant?
This is a three-year grant.
A three-year grant.
We have the option to ask for a continuance every year, but a maximum of three years.
I know we've got a couple of grants, you know, that have been brought to our attrition. You feel like they have a place to fall back to within the police department?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
I make a motion, please, ma'am.
First by Mr. Holborn.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on, item number seven is request consideration to purchase replacement fire protection system at the Recreation Center. Ms. McConnell?
We do have another piece of equipment that we're talking about tonight that has reached the end of its useful life, and we have, we have Bobby Bevel here with us to talk about the Rec Center and our needs for this replacement fire protection system, and we have.
Chief, so here to you.
Oh. Oh, I can't find him.
My chauffeur's here.
We have Chief Ratcher here, too, so you have two experts to tell you about this particular fire protection system at the Recreation Center.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Mr. Bevel.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. I don't know about two experts, but there is one.
Oh, yeah.
This is a request to replace our fire protection system at the Recreation Center. The current one we have, there's no parts made for that. We started having issues in August with the dialer system failing. The company came out and at that time told us that there were no parts available. They did go back and found a used part on their shelf that they were able to put in, no guarantee, and buy us some time to get to an area to try to replace it. This system monitors our facility 24 hours a day. It detects a drop in the sprinkler system pressure. It also has heat sensors, smoke detectors. If that is tripped, it notifies dispatch, who in turn contacts our fire department. The system is required by the National Fire Protection Association and our city code, our local code, which we adopted the standard fire prevention code, and that section requires the building owner to be responsible to maintain the fire and life safety system in audible condition at all times. I talked to Chief Ratcher, and he had recently dealt with Centos and replacing the system in the federal jail, and we wanted to try, at his recommendation, to keep our fire protection under one umbrella instead of having several different companies do this. So, Centos was submitted a quote of $20,287, replaces our fire panel, all the smoke detectors, relays, duct detectors, our pull stations, strobe lights, and horns. It also has a 12-volt amp battery backup system in case we do lose power, and the labor. So, this system is a digital system, it replaces the analog system, and as you know, that we opened in June of 2006, so that system is 12 years old, and this would give us the protection we need to stay open. So, we recommend going with the Centos as a sole source, 2002-18, basically because they are expertise in this field and because they have systems in the federal jail, city jail, and city hall.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Stewart?
I know we're trying to keep all the systems under one umbrella, does that pretty much, I guess, give us the ability not to do procurement on it? Mr. McLean?
That's, I guess, appropriate, yes.
And I guess, looking at the city hall, city jails, what is our municipal business center? Who's that through?
The municipal business center is still under the other contractor that we had, and I'm sorry, but I keep, it was official. They also had city hall, city jail, and the federal jail. And we had a lot of problems just getting them here, and so hopefully, as we progress and changing over, we can also change over the municipal business center with one contractor that will give us the service that we're getting from Centos now.
Hopefully, it'll be the same, Centos, since everybody'd be under one umbrella.
Yes, sir.
And I guess, this is, I think, and Councilman Roberts just showed me, it's 12 years old, is that the typical life expectancy on one of these units?
That's, I'll tell you, the system at the Rec Center has probably went beyond its life expectancy. It was just fortunate enough that we hadn't had any problems with it up until now, and with the dialer that's in there, as Bobby stated, you know, they're obsolete now, and we've gone from analog to digital on our phones and most everything else. So, we've been fortunate enough to be able to survive this long with this digital dial-up system that's in the Rec Center, and it's got to the point that it just needs to be repaired anymore. And, you know, one thing about Centos, they do have a liability clause in with their systems that they, that they put in, you know, they, if something fails, then the liability goes back to them. So, it's, you know, it's a, it's a good system, it's modern, up to date, it'll carry us on, you know, into the future with, along the city hall and the city jail and the federal jail.
I know, just a comment, I know that I've asked for two years, and I think that other councilmembers have asked about building maintenance, and I would consider this part of an ongoing maintenance, so I guess, this $20,000 or something are thereof, going upwards, something that we probably need to be accounting for or have on our bulletin board 10 years from now, or eight to 10 years, because it's going to hit us again, I guess, once it runs out through its life expectancy again, because I guess what I'm hearing, the life expectancy is about eight to 10 years on one of these systems?
Yes, sir. And I really think with the going to this digital system, that it'll carry us into the future, but, you know, 10 years, that's, it seems like a long time, but it's a short period of time for us. But I would, I would think that in 10 years, we'll be, the good thing about going to the digital now, and the cost of this system for the Rec Center, the reason it's so pricey is because none of the strobes or none of the pull stations is compatible with a new digital system. Once we change over to the digital system, then if the panel has to be replaced, then it would be compatible as long as the digital system. It would be compatible, and the horns and the strobes, pull stations shouldn't have to be replaced again, even if we had to replace the panel in the future.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Ms. Newton?
This, Ms. McConnell, from Q, and this is more so for y'all. What level of fiscal authority do you and your staff have kind of in this situation?
$10,000.
All right. I mean, just by me listening to it, you know, I hear, you know, Bobby mentioned his concerns, you know, he called the chief, and it went to y'all and put on the agenda for us here. I mean, you know, when the chief is up there saying that it was essentially limping along, you know, we're having to do all these stopgap measures, I mean, that's just something, I mean, I like, and I do believe in accountability, and, you know, I think everything we should, you know, obviously need oversight with this kind of stuff, but, you know, when it comes to fire systems or something, you know, I seen here the fire chief recommends having all the city's fire protection systems under one umbrella. I mean, to me, that's really all that needs to be said in this situation. You know, I don't really like having, which, I mean, it's a system that we have, obviously, but, you know, Mr. Bevel having to call the chief, having to call y'all, having to come to us, you know, I think if there's a need when it comes to safety, you know, I would like to see the city having that authority.
We, I appreciate you saying that. We do have the ability certainly for an emergency procurement, and we would have certainly done this had we not had this meeting coming up. I will tell you that looking at our procurement regulations, it's been a while since we've done that, and that is on our radar, Margot, David, and I've talked about that, and we'll be happy to speed that up and bring something back to you for your consideration.
I'd love to see that, particularly how, you know, the fiscal authority of Anderson compares to other municipalities.
We'd be glad to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Ma'am?
Ms. Loughridge?
I think Councilman Nelson has a great, great point. I want to ask one question, though. Is the, is the system that we have at the Rec Center the same system that we have at municipal building and all of those? And are they analog as well?
I think the, I think them really in the past year or so really worked hard, and the, and a good place is Anthony University, that, for example, they had a toy interceptor alarm companies monitoring Anthony University, and we've worked with them over the past year and a half to get to one, one system and one company, and it's all digital. The digital system works much better because analog, that is basically a phone in a box.
Yep.
And it causes a lot more trouble if, you know, we have power outages or lightning strikes and that sort of thing. The dialing capability of that one little box gets knocked out, then your whole, your whole system's out, and you only have hopefully a local alarm if somebody goes and pulls the box. We're still not notified unless somebody actually makes that nine in one call.
Well, in that case, I think it's a safety issue like Councilman Nelson says, so I think that we need to go ahead and, what?
Call him Nelson, his new.
I'm sorry, it's only been a couple of years. Apologize. I apologize. But we need to go ahead and purchase this, so I make the motion that we go ahead and consider the replacement system for the Rec Center.
Second.
And I apologize to you, Mr. Councilman.
First, second by Thompson. Ms. Chapman?
I just want to confirm, this is a complete component replacement, so the only thing that we're really remaining from the existing system is the conduit and the wall and the wire.
And the wire. Okay. And then, that covers, thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Just a comment, kind of concur with what Councilman Newton said, and I guess this to Linda and David, I know we do, you guys send us emergency repairs all the time for stuff in the sewer plants or things that we're doing downtown, but looking at the nature of the kids that we have playing sports in our Recreation Center, I would, I would hope going forward, anything that we consider as an emergency repair, just like we would anything that happens in our downtown or in our sewer plants, and so that maybe we wouldn't even have to discuss this tonight.
If we hadn't had a meeting tonight, we certainly would have done it at the emergency round.
And Councilman Stewart, I have something else to say. If you remember on the city jail, we did kind of do emergency repair on that because that system wasn't reporting to anybody. We felt like, that Bobby and I talked over the Rec Center situation, and by then finding the parts that we needed to make that system function, we felt like it wasn't an emergency right then, that we got to jump and do something. It gave us a little time to do some research, and like Ms. McConnell said, the council week was coming up tonight, so we felt like that it was.
Second, sir.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The last item of all, new business. Last item of our new business is request consideration of the ordinance consenting to placement of real property into a multi-county industrial business park and approving a credit agreement with J.B. Ferguson Properties LLC and Estate Planning Consultants and other related matters. Ms. McConnell?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we would recommend that, um, item eight, it is part of the executive session that you see below, so if you would like for us to cover the, um, administrative briefing items, first, we would recommend that you save item number eight for discussion in executive session. We would expect that you, you may consider action on that item, which is why it's listed on your agenda in this fashion.
Thank you. I think we'll heed your advice and do administrative briefing before we go into executive session.
Well, we're almost at the end of October, but we do have a, uh, Concerned Citizens of the East Side that meet at five P.M., and this time they're meeting at Fire Station Number One for, uh, tour of that facility and understanding our fire service, um, services. And then in November, I can't believe that we're already headed for November, but we start the month off with the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting. We are the host this time in November, um, and, um, please let us know your plans to attend, and then note also that on, um, Sunday, November the eleventh, we will have the Veterans Day Parade, and thanks to Chief Bratcher for, I keep looking in the wrong direction, uh, for, um, spearheading this effort. We will be closed for Veterans Day on Monday, the twelfth, which is a regular council meeting day for us, and it looks as though we will, um, reschedule that meeting for Tuesday, the thirteenth. And then the Southeast Anderson Task Force meets on the fifteenth, and Holiday ICE opens on November the sixteenth, so we're, um, headed into a busy, um, November.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Nelson, go ahead.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Um, I just wanted to thank, um, Chief Bratcher for taking our committee, our group, uh, community group on tour of the city Fire Department. Uh, it was an exceptional, uh, eye-opener for a lot of folks because they didn't realize all of the equipment that we had available to help the folks in, in our community. Uh, and on top of that, they were amazed at the museum. That's the best kept secret at Anderson, is the fact that we do have a, an absolutely amazing little museum up there with some amazing equipment that come, came around from the past, and even got an old piece of our, um, water system, uh, that's made out of wood. So it's, it's an amazing little thing that, if you haven't seen it, you really ought to take a little bit of time to go up there and, and peruse that museum and, and actually take a tour of the fire program. It's amazing.
To add to that is, uh, the dream team also to the tour, and I would thank, uh, Chief Bratcher for that. It was interesting, and like the museum, you know, it's really something to see.
It really is.
You go back to all the old fire trucks it used to have, and it's very interesting. I want to thank Chief Bratcher for that.
Mr. Mayor, I may as well. I know Ms. McConnell hit on it, but Chief Bratcher, thank you for what you do for the Veterans Day Parade. There are many people that appreciate that. We get a lot of thank you letters sent to us from the individuals throughout the community, but I know you spearheaded that. Thank you.
It's, it's a real, uh, no, I've got, it's not just me, it's a...
I understand.
It helps me put that together.
Well, thank everyone, but...
We feel like it's well worth the effort, so to speak.
Appreciate you. One more. Tony?
Yeah. Um, just to point out on the council calendar, on November the fifteenth, the Southeast Anderson Task Force, this is a, uh, the meeting right the week before Thanksgiving, and the community group always, the community always provides a real nice Thanksgiving meal for the community. It's nothing that any of the staff needs to come to do any reports on, but the community just would still like for you to come out, enjoy the fellowship, and get a real good Thanksgiving meal, a lot of good food out there, so, uh, just want to make sure that you are aware that anybody, any city official, division head, you're welcome to come, enjoy their, probably have enough food for fifty, sixty people there. And then, um, uh, Ms. McConnell, if you don't mind, uh, check, uh, double check on this Thursday's meeting with the Concerned Citizens of the East Side at Fire Station One. I had a call from Mr. Dillonham today just confirming, uh, he said he spoke with Mr. Irvin about, um, meeting there this Thursday at, uh, five o'clock. So, uh, they're thinking that the meeting is there, and this is the first I've heard about, uh, Fire Station One, but I'll do that, just double check, um, before we send staff there, because kind of a little conflicting information.
We certainly will. Thank you.
I don't entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Okay.
That was first. And second by Mr. Jeff Roberts. First was, uh, Mr. John Roberts. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand in executive session. I don't entertain a motion to come out of executive session. First by Mr. Stewart, second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We stand our executive session. Um, in executive session, we did discuss item eight, and that would be the John B. Ferguson property in regards to, um, getting approval for the city to enter into a multi-county industrial park, um, Anderson County and Goringa County, and we are, um, after talking through this and from, uh, from Linda and, and management team and, and city attorney, um, we are considering the ordinance to enter into that agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, request on first reading, the consideration for an ordinance consenting to placement of real property into a multi-county industrial park, under John B. Ferguson Properties LLC.
Second.
First by Mr. John Roberts, second by Dr. Thompson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, if you're now, if we're on the first reading. I don't entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by everybody else.
I think even Mr.... Even those in favor, say aye? We stand our...